James Green, District D.
Yes.
Mr. Derry Green, District D. Mr. Locke, District E.
Yeah.
Uh, we have four present, Mr. Derry Green is absent, you do have one.
Please stand. Mr. Locke, please.
It's about his. Oh, merciful Father.
Yes.
Thank you, the Father, and us again be here to carry out the business of this city.
Yes.
So, thank you, oh, merciful Father, for watching over us, making sure that we do everything that is in order. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please, 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 to this land, the United States of America, and to the world, which is saying, "One nation, under God, in the business, with liberty and justice for all."
Agenda modifications? Any agenda modifications?
There can't be any, Mary.
Would they come in as they relate to the item of agenda?
Good evening.
Hold up, hold up, Streetman, Mr. Pratt. Oh, that's an agenda modification.
Oh, I thought you said it was coming.
I did, I'm on it.
Mr. Green, if you could take your agenda modification.
Okay, please, please, please.
There's no modifications, uh, would they come in as they relate to items on the agenda?
Good evening, my name is Charles Bradford, thirty, from Washington Street. I look at this agenda here, special meeting call, we're talking about this general, general budget. I want to make a comment, has that budget been posted? Are you going to discuss it tonight? I haven't seen it, I looked on the wall, I come in every other day, just for a posted budget. I just want to have it posted, if not, I'd like to take opportunity to, to see before the public, either one of them, as well as the street budget and the sewer budget. A, B, and C, I just want to have it been posted to the public. Anybody can get a copy of one tonight?
We bring it, we bring it before the council, let the council see if they want to have anything after they have been posted.
Okay, well, oh, y'all, I mean, can you, can I get a copy and discuss it? I'd like to make a, I think the citizens have a right, sure the councils have a right to do as well, but if I wanted to make a comment or make a suggestion to the budget, that's a citizen, any change in that, I made it feel, citizens should be on the budget, I should have an opportunity to do so.
Yeah, I think, I think there's one, once Ricky gets here, he just run about five minutes back, I think he's got a bunch of comments up.
Who is that, Ricky?
Ricky Smith.
Oh, he, he coming?
He is, he's just run five minutes back, they ran a court, a little long.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, I think, I think that, that, that's the goal, that, that's talking to Ricky about it, because that's, that's his primary business, that they were trying to just kind of bring you the budget to the council, see if there's anything, get a copy of it, then do the ten, and when the publics want to have the ten day layover, have the hearing, and then have the meeting too, so you'll have three points of input on everything. But I, but I get it.
I just want to get it from the beginning, if I can see from my past experience, from the council, kind of state engagement, what's going on, and give any input, any citizen have the right to do this.
You were engaged before your vote, okay?
Yeah, right.
Right, you're, you're definitely right. Don't preface that.
Okay, I can just, I just want to be, I don't want to be making comments on something I don't, I can't see.
Okay, well, we're going to number five, announcements and recommendations by the mayor and districts. Anybody have anything?
I have one, we want to keep all the pretty families in our prayers, uh, we want to keep the priest family in our prayers. Keep your head up, God is in control.
Okay, number, um, six, report from the city officials.
I just have a quick report, just, um, I, I told everybody last time, it's really hot outside. Everybody, please stay well hydrated, drink plenty of Vatilade, if you start feeling heat exhaustion, please move to a cooler place, a lot of people suffering from heat exhaustion at this time of year. So, we want to protect our kids and the elderly, really important, so watch out for the family members, and just keep them warm, and keep a cool environment.
Message from District C, hold up, before he, uh... We can't read the agenda, makes another agenda, but he's not having the budget yet, he's on his way. I want to make a statement before he go into the budget. Mayor, we're not extending it, it's still, yeah, public, with the public official. I just want to make a statement about District C, spoke with the attorney, we may get a lot of calls on that property on Bentley and Montgomery. I talked to the attorney, and we, he, City Bash is not taking it no more, that is a eyesore, it is a danger, it is a hazard. And I spoke with the attorney, and the owner, he's going to have to do something with the property. Uh, I'm going to get with the attorney and see if we can, as a city, condemn it altogether.
Yeah, I believe that once we get a report from, and piggyback that, to piggyback... Piggyback that, once we get our report about the status of it, and that it is what we believe it to be, considered a dangerous building, we'll be able to bring it to the council, we'll have a meeting.
Because what you got is, we got kids, I got a call today also about a same property. We have kids, uh, drive bicycles, putting weight, the trash, from bringing trash from all locations and dumping it on that property.
Very much so, it's, it's, it's a plaguing problem, and it's part of the aggressive enforcement of the code of ordinances that govern the sanitary conditions of properties, and the fact that it is a danger. By looks, it's a dangerous building, but the engineer report will tell us that it is per the state law, which then we can bring to the hearing, for the council to make a decision on whether to condemn and have it let it be restored.
What kind of building is this?
This is a single-family residence that has gone into a dilapidated state for a period of years. It's on the corner of Bentley and Montgomery, it's not the first house on the corner, it's back on, on the, on the Montgomery side. It's, it is very dilapidated, it, it appears it has transient people and activity throughout it, it has what we would consider to be activity that is, where people are just dumping, leaving stuff, removing things, it has become such a state that it's, it's completely unsanitary. Uh, there are not running utilities in this, there, which is going to almost oxymatically put it into a place where it's a dangerous building per the state law definition, but we had to have a, the engineer issue that a report that comes to the council that night when we do it, and it's just that a public hazard, that is creating more hazardous conditions that it's just not tolerable, it, it, it's creating tons of issues.
The reason I asked, uh, what type of building, was I wanted to make sure we're talking about, uh, this doesn't matter what type of building, but since it is a family home, uh, there are properties uh, that are located in our district, uh, from what you're describing, are just as bad.
Yeah.
There's property on the, in the Biden Street, there's a property right here on, uh, Division. Uh, again, it's a dilapidated house, the bushes and the grass and the trees may not have, may not be, uh, may not have grown up, but again, it's a property where you have a lot of trash, you have a lot of electrical equipment, you have a lot of cars, you have trucks. A lot of times, they're working on it in the yard, so when they're working on it in the yard, they're occupying the street. Again, you know, I can call the police, we can call the police for that if they are occupying the street, but again, uh, there are, there are some major, a lot of properties that are listed just the same, and we need to, uh, that's why, as last, we have a list of those properties that, you know...
Correct, and, and it is one of those things where, uh, having a single-family residence or any form of residence that has, does not have utilities to it, you're just going to push it into the presumption that it is a, a, one, it's in violation of ordinances, you, you cannot have a residence here that does not have utilities from it to it. The second thing is, is that when you start getting to that kind of character and nature of buildings, you start talking about that infrastructure, because they're unsafe, they're, they're not capable of keeping people from entering and exiting. A lot of times, they have windows, doors, things like that, that are not covered, and they become, uh, public hazards because the activity that existed now, and the things that happened, uh, it only takes looking back a little while back, where we had a incident where somebody was deceased in one of those buildings, and had to be discovered. Uh, so, it, it's just a public hazard, a plague, and something that has to be aggressively addressed, and is being aggressively addressed nowadays, now that we can go forward with it.
Okay, since the country club and housing repair is on our, in our budget, do we have another update? I know maybe you said last time the engineers were working on giving the supplies, so is that still the case?
Yes, this is waiting, I should hear something by Friday, it'll be in this story.
Man, I think if we get a code enforcement officer, I think the whole city has, all districts have those types of dilapidated homes. So, seeing now one, one district, if it has, we, we get code enforcement officer names, so we can start getting, I'm going to do this together, but we have that throughout the district, throughout the city.
It is, it is a systemic problem, government.
Throughout the city?
Throughout, it's, it's not isolated, one street, one district, one even block of numbers of addresses. It is systemic throughout, and it is something that we have to aggressively get on top of, that's what we're...
So, maybe we're still on the correct timeline, that we should have a code enforcement officer by office first?
No, it's never, office first, I don't know where, where they got the...
Oh, you, I thought you told us thirty days.
No, it's, uh, we shouldn't have it though, we, about seven or eight, about that. We have, and, and as I understand it, regardless of that, we, we spoke to several individuals that are, are well qualified individuals to do it, uh, talking with somebody who's going to be full-time, that was staffed, be able to kind of keep it back on the structure, uh, the way it works, most of the time, that's a police officer who has come over, uh, there is some structure as to the, the individual who was talking of doing it, willing to do it, about, it's kind of, everyone's with retirement, so that you can, you can structure that so that they can properly, uh, disconnect that paperwork with six or seven for, for somebody full-time, and there's several people who are concerned about helping with part-time, so that she'll have to have some free time to help with everything.
As long as we have a timeline, and as long as we can give it out to our people, very long enough?
Yes, aggressively do that on all that.
Okay.
The reason I brought up Bentley and Montgomery, because they've been here several times, speaking about the property, and I'm speaking for my district, everybody else is speaking for their own district, I'm talking about my district over there. They called me, they spoke with the attorney, and it is, it's not just the house, it is homeless people, it is, they're coming from all over vast, and if you just sit there, it's going to be like twenty to twenty people come in and out of that house a day, and it got so bad that the residents say they just won't move. They don't even want, they don't even want to stay there, because they feel like they complain on their feet. So, that, that's the reason I brought that up, because they came, they came here several times. So, it's not just about the dilapidated house, we know we have that all throughout the city. I'm speaking because they came here, and they cried out to the city, I want them to know that I hear them.
Here I went so much that I know that it's on the corner of Bentley and Montgomery, the first house on the street is, is a very nice house, and the second one back is not that, I have, I do not live in more house values, and I know exactly the address for it, and what it looks like in color, we've been on top of it to meet, uh, Mr. Jay Green, uh, because there is a hotspot right now for that activity, and it will transition, it will transition throughout districts, and that's how, since that way, you know, we aggressively get it, but that's kind of the head on the problem right now, is that one. And, but once we clear that, it'll, it'll transition to another one, and we'll be here again, so we have to, we have a game plan to address the most acute down to just ones that are just bad properties, that don't seem to have any of those homeless issues, but could provide a place for them to go to after that, or just not as much homeless, it's just activity for individuals who aren't authorized to be there.
So, do you have the list, are you compiling the list?
So, we, I have talked with Robert Waxman, who had a potential list of things, I'm trying to confirm with him, and he's trying to confirm that he had that list, it was during the time they were seeking a grant for that blighted property. Uh, there is a, there is, that blighted grant property, I was able to confirm, is, is still in it. They have not made a decision yet, he didn't make an appeal to it, and he is getting that document for me so that we can get that of the properties, there's, there's approximately about sixty-two properties that was on that, uh, but he submitted all the paperwork to the state, and so I'm conserving, you know, the paperwork that he had a copy of to get it. Originally, I did not have a copy of it, I was just aware of the list.
One other quick question, uh, what is it going to take for a property to be, uh, listed as condemned?
So, what it takes for a property listed as condemned, it, it's actually a process, there's a state law that says that it has to be a dangerous, it has to be a dangerous building, and dangerous is defined by state law, and you, and you have an engineer who will say, yes, this meets our criteria for dangerous, meaning that it creates a irreparable public harm, where somebody could go into it, it could collapse, you're, not having running utilities or something is going to be a feature of that, but I mean, you could have a property that just had its water line cut, that's brand new, and the more open that you look at is what is the condition of it, what is the likelihood that if somebody were to be in here, that it would create a public hazard, or something that could create a, that could cause harm to them, or what we call an attractive nuisance, where activity is occurring at, so like Lowry, the, the, the one twenty-three North Washington building that's known as the Lowry Building, that was simple, it, it's leaning over, it has stuff, it's very clear that that is a imminent danger, much as East Side School, although it's dilapidated, it's past the point where the test is not this, but it's close, the cost to repair it versus the cost to rebuild it, the cost to repair it would exceed the cost to rebuild it. If, when that's the case, then it's going to be a dangerous building.
I'm glad you brought up East Side School, where, where, where are we with that?
So, when it last left there, the last I knew of, because I'm not, I was not in public works, is that bids closely had been gained to try and do something with that, trying to recover, get those bids that are working to something that the engineer would have, because that's something that would be put through that, and so that's where that needs to go, is, is how much it was, I did, if I remember correctly, I heard it was somewhere, I remember that I was told by Mr. Wilson, it was somewhere north of a hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of that question of that.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, right, I was going random.
Yeah, I believe it was, don't, don't, hold me quote, but I remember it was six figures, and it was in the hundred, and then I think one bid came in above two hundred.
Did that care?
It was, it was... And that's probably, that's probably one of your largest projects, to kind of give you an idea, that's going to be your outlier on the, the high comps.
Yeah, it's probably one of the most important, sitting in the middle of town.
It is, and, and the Lowry Building likewise, I believe, was left a bit, was very similar to that, uh, because of the engineering that's required, because it, it shares a common fault, so, but hopefully we can get our hands on those actual products, uh, show them the actual bids, or engineering, how to build them, how to do those projects, and that's the process.
One information, Attorney General, I'm, I'm looking at this document that was left of the public work, and it states that this one fifty was going to come not from a grant, but out of the general fund.
Which one?
The project on, um, one nineteen North Washington, Lowry Building, by, by the post office, eleven eighty.
Is that one nineteen or one twenty-three?
It says one nineteen.
I always had this impression, Lowry Building's one twenty-three North Washington. Yeah, one hundred fifty is what they estimate, they don't know what the engineer inspections are related to. System, system, that's my check.
As understood, they, they, they just come with them.
Okay.
And I'm understanding that you have proposed to tear it down now?
I, I am not aware that we have ever proposed to tear it down, other than I'd ask Mr. Wilson to just to get bids to give us ideas, because everybody was shooting in the dark, you know, there's always talk asbestos, this, that, let's just find out what it would cost, what somebody would do it for, let's get three bids, let's see where it's at, rather than us, uh, you know, take a wild guess, I, I don't, I don't do building demo issues. Uh...
I was just asking a question.
But no, to answer your question short, I do not know that we are proposed to tear it down, other than just to gain bids for it. I, I think when they did this, uh, we were not in the impression it was going to come out of general fund, but they was working on a grant.
There is, there is a grant, that's a grant that Mr. Waxman and then we'll put in together, Robert Waxman was, does some grant writing for the city on a contract basis, he's kind of a headhunter for grants, he takes a piece of the grant, if he gets a grant, that's kind of how he gets involved in the action, there was a grant that was put together, or the scoring system, that's where the original list of properties came from, I was not part of the list of properties, I wasn't aware, it was the most plaguing properties, by the most plaguing property owner that we had at the time, and, but I was, I was not provided that list, not trying to acquire that list in, in the means that I can, since it's meant with a grant.
And I know this, um, is not directly related to the budget, but it could impact the budget. Do we have a list of all upcoming, um, grants, deadlines, things that we need to really be aware of?
Yes, so, as of today, we have, uh, several what are called, uh, community development block grants. Some of those were straight from the United States, uh, government, some of those were some that the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development gave to the state of Louisiana, and the state of Louisiana awarded it to us as of what's called a sub-grantee, uh, we have made contact as of twelve o'clock today, right before June, we made contact with the state and the director of that program, let us know if there's any outstanding requirements on some of those grants, or anything that needs to be done and deadlines, to ensure that that's buttoned up. We also have a list of the grants that have been awarded to the city of Baxter, as of, I believe, I named this morning, was able to, uh, have somebody help obtain a list for that.
That's good.
Thankfully, yeah, thankfully I have access to somebody that does grant writing.
That's good.
Who helped out, and put that contact to the new, they switched state directors down there on those grants, and so the new contact, I have the contact person for that, and they're going to, here in the next week, provide us with anything outstanding, and where the status is of the grants.
Wonderful.
And just to add to that, uh, when you look at the sales tax, uh, budget, there's about one point one million dollars in that grant, again, you got to itemize as to, the, the projects, the projects that are associated with that grant funding, which I believe, uh, originated in the, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, or twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
So, two of the, two of what we call the community block development grants, that came from the state of Louisiana, which means that the, the United States, uh, Housing and Urban Development gave that money to the state of Louisiana, the state of Louisiana then awarded it out to the Louisiana Community Block Development Grants, uh, program. Those, there are two grants, one came in February of twenty-three, one came in July of twenty-four. Those two encompass about one point six million dollars worth of money that we're deciding to make repairs to city hall, and also make repairs to streets, if you recall, we voted four or five streets to be repaired upon, uh, those, that money was, was provided to the city, and it's going to be provided to the city in a way. Now, sometimes when you get this grant money, there's twenty-two grants that just got their award letters and got their payments this year, that money sometimes runs behind in that avenue, so that's where we're determining that process, we're, we're having help to determine have these twenty-three, the February twenty-three, and the July of twenty-four grants, have they been awarded yet? If they have not been awarded yet, where's the status of when they're going to be awarded, if they know they're going to be awarded? And at that point, we'll move forward with them, but that's why I said it was an expense item in the budget, because in order for, in order for you to send engineering, you have to have, you have to have at least fifty percent of the estimated cost of engineering to bid, so you leave it in your thing as an expense item, that way, whenever you get ready to, you get your engineering done, you can let it for bids as quick as possible, because the time to let it is when the engineering finishes, and you set it out for bids, the cost can change, as we've seen on that, and things like that. So, that's why you see that in your budget items as expense items, but not income items.
And just note that the, uh, the bunnies that receive, they refer back to the fund, uh, when they're not expending, because if you look at, uh, page one of the street...
Hold on, hold on, we, uh, we, uh, point of, point of order, we, 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 we out of order right now, we, we still at number six.
Okay.
We have to, so if there are no more reports, then Mary can move to seven, and then we can get into, you know, a special meeting, and discuss the project. And before we do, I want to, uh, make a note that, uh, a state, previous city council received an unbalanced deficit operating budget from the previous administration in twenty thirty, which has, which was the last day of our administration, which they wisely voted against, my administration has presented tonight a balanced budget to the city council and the citizens of the city of Baxter. My team and I will continue to work to provide a balanced budget each, my, just a year. My team has worked for hours to present this balanced budget, and I would ask Mr. Ricky Smith, who I as a owner has budget and policy director, to give our report. Moving forward, I will implement standard, standard operating procedures in all the city department, as well reorganizing our choice. Uh, at this time, Mr. Ricky, could you take us through the, the budget, the balance ratios we have tonight?
Before we begin, if, if this just for review, it's a reading, that's not the bottom.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
This is, is, uh, Mayor Moore's, uh, strategy in regards to being transparent, giving the council ample time to make the decision, that's why we, uh, asked to have this meeting, so you can have this, uh, information before you, because again, remember, this is a budget proposal, you know, you are responsible for, um, pursuring, so to speak...
You know, you are responsible for um pursuring so to speak in regards to city government. So uh, this is the budget proposal. Anything that you see at least from now until the fourteenth, as we anticipate, Mr. Jones, I think advertising the budget, sometimes next week. So at any point between now, there's twenty-fourth to the fourteenth. Uh, of course, you exercise your legislative authority to amend the justice and modify the budget as you see fit. This is just the current administration proposal, so.
Before we begin, can we make sure that the public is aware of this and that they can get a copy?
Yeah, uh, we're gonna make it public, uh, we have to uh have it posted ten days before we take. But we're gonna have it posted well in advance of uh the meeting, uh, the public meeting, so they have more than ten days to review it. But again, uh, councilman, this is just, again, what uh you can expect moving forward is to provide information to the council. With a significant amount of time to do your due diligence and do your job. So that, you know, we can work together uh and move the city forward. So.
Also, and freely, freely transparent as ever, if you'd like to come by the office, the council, you are welcome to look at anything, to ask about anything. You can even sit in my chair if you like.
That's your chair, man.
Mr. Smith, you spoke about a balanced budget.
Yes.
And one of the reasons we did not vote on it, because the previous mayor left an unbalanced budget. That was a deficit of like eight hundred some projected, eight hundred some five. We can't vote on a budget that's upside down, that's first of all. I want to commend you if the budget is balanced, but we all, as a council, we're going to listen to you. And we're going to have to make sure that it's balanced, because we can't vote on upside down budget. That's right. Now, Attorney.
Sorry. Thank you, members, uh, if you can, you pull out on the packet, uh, there's a uh. A packet that says City of Baxter General Fund Proposed Budget for the year ended June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-six. We also have in the packet that should be uh what I'm called support documents. Uh, it is a. Uh, general fund actuals for the revenue and expenditure side for the last five years. Before we get into it, a lot of, uh, if you have any questions in regards to uh what was proposed and amounts that were proposed. What uh this administration did in regards to preparing this budget. We looked at the uh five-year actuals, uh, as you can see in the packet, we looked at the uh the average of five-year actuals. Uh, and compared it to the most recent uh fiscal year, and then we looked at the trend over the last two fiscal years compared to five. And we tried to make a rational, reasoned uh projection in regards to revenue. Again, we led, being on the side of uh being conservative in estimates. Uh, because you can see, uh, we're going to start with the bottom line first, we project a general fund revenue of about fourteen point three million dollars. Uh, if you can compare that to the uh previous administration proposed budget. I think it's uh probably about three to four hundred thousand dollars, uh, they projected more revenue. Uh, I can tell you a little more conservative amount of estimates in regards to the sales tax. That amounted to probably a little more than two-thirds of the difference between if you compare the proposed budget that you rejected and uh the budget that we're preparing in regards to the projected uh revenue. Uh, and to be more specific, if you want to go to page two, sorry, page three. Uh, looking at uh line seventy-eight, column G. We projected about six point two uh million dollars of sales tax collection. Uh, if you go to the support documents, if you go to uh, I'm sorry, probably not even longer pages, uh, in that document. But if you go to the fourth page.
Which one do you think?
The support document, the actual, the five-year actual. Uh, and you got to get an idea of how we went about making that projection. Because you look at the sales tax collections, uh, from FY twenty-one to twenty-five, there was average collections about uh five point nine. And we looked at the five point nine, and we looked at the previous two fiscal years where you had six, six million eighty-four thousand, and you increased uh a couple of percentage points. Uh, to six million ninety-five. So based on the five-year actions and that trend, we propose a conservative estimates of sales tax collection in the amount of six point two million dollars. Uh, which that is, uh, and if our projections again are conservative and the uh projections that the previous administration made is more important. There's a possibility of having an uh an extra three hundred thousand dollars in revenue potentially for either to reserve into the fund balance. Or uh decide to extend in other categories. Uh, the good thing about that, that sales tax revenue, so that's a recurrent source. So if you decided, say mid-year, you wanted to change your budget and add something or increase something, that's a recurrent expense, I mean, recurrent revenue. That you can tie to a recurrent expense and will have an issue in the budget. Which uh it's good news that we we presented a proposed budget, but uh as we go through this, uh, there is a. How would I say, elephant in the room in regards to uh the budget for next year, because there are about uh one point six million dollars of uh one-time money. That's uh tied to, I don't know the percentage, because I have to go through it, the recurrent revenue, which is presents a problem. Because when we do the budget for the next fiscal year, uh, you know, we have to work together to bridge that gap. So, but the good news is that we do have a conservative uh projected uh rep uh general fund revenue. That's tied to a conservative projected uh expenditures in uh general fund that are balanced. Uh, so if I could just, you know, just uh briefly, just from a high level, uh, go through the revenue size to kind of show you and identify some of the one-time money that we see. Page one, uh, the first item you see is that's a grant. Uh, I'd love to know if some of y'all attended the town hall that uh Trent, uh, Central Trenton Jackson Andrew and Rex and Fisher had. Uh, part of their presentation was to advise uh the city that there is a twenty thousand dollar grant that uh is coming to the city. We haven't uh got confirmation on when that's uh going to be received, so we have to sign an account number to it and uh. And I just want that to reflect in the budget as well. Uh, there's nothing, a whole lot that's uh different in regards to uh the revenues on this page. But you can see the act, line seven, uh, uh, column G, there's uh fifty thousand dollars in the uh city hall water damage, that's one time money. Uh, if you come down, um, you got the uh Dotson Park, the Black Grant, uh, on line three, column G, that's one time money. And then uh line twenty-nine, G, that's one time money.
So you feel that it, uh, twelve thousand five hundred?
Yes.
Is that, is that one of the grants that happened, uh, that you were talking about, continuing of pipeline that's been submitted?
No, thi- this is one that was already awarded, uh, I'm sorry, I missed that conversation, I'm not sure what your reference.
What you're talking about, those two twenty-five thousand dollar grants, twelve thousand five hundred of it was already awarded. It was already paid, it's been awarded, the other twelve thousand five hundred is due to be gained for each one of those grants. So yes, the one-time use on each one of those for this upcoming budget cycle will be twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Let's make it, that grant designed for, you see the Baxter or Dotson Park?
That grant would have to be per the specific paperwork that is, as it's declared by its act, says for those certain uses, there are probably some. We have to gain the paperwork to see the specific uses for it, but it is declared by the Legislative Insurance Act that was granted to be for Dotson Park.
If you lost, I use a lowly terms.
It says for, it says for Dotson Park, but the the, the actual act that was passed as for Dotson Park on it. There will be more detail in the agreement that was signed, a copy of which we're getting.
Is the Dotson Park grant, is this the grant we're talking about that that was used uh proposed to be used for kids?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's where the specifics come, the top general title is for Dotson Park, the specifics as to how it, that is spelled out is is going to be in the agreement that we're getting a copy of.
So by next meeting, we should?
Hopefully by next meeting we have that, and it's kind of been running on treadmill on some of these grants, because when that paperwork gets executed, things get done. It's kind of one of those that on the back, on the front end, we all voted, yeah, let's let's go ahead and then just get this money. And then now we're having to look at the agreements and conditions to see what the specifics of it were uh in light of the things that occurred.
Point of information, Attorney Jones. But if we, when we do our budget, through the budget process, when we vote and we look at an act number. Despite how it became, and once it's been placed, and you give it an act number. It's there until the council vote otherwise. I think that's what the problem is, everybody keep talking about the Dotson Park grant. It's spelled out when you look at the act, they got, they got the act number by it.
Correct, so that is the, the the act was the bill that was passed by, in the Louisiana Legislature, was assigned the act of number three ninety-seven. It has a very general description. There is a proposal that you submit to get that title put in the act. That proposal has the terms of what you use it by, but generally speaking, the title is a summation of what you're going to use it for. You're not going to put on, if you were going to have a grant for the animal shelter, you're not going to put Dotson Park on it. Okay? So yes, to answer your question, yes, it generally denotes the activity, it's applied to, the specifics of what can be applied to is in the. Grant application and the agreement that's later signed once you're awarded the grant.
And just to add, go back to you having a pro tip and question that you had, one of the other support documents that we're going to uh create moving forward. And it's going to be a part of the budget processes, having capital outlay. But uh the outlays, all the projects for all of the general funds, street fund, sewer fund. So you don't have to go try to figure anything out. You see it in the budget, but in the support documents, you have a capital budget, and it adds everything. And that's one of the control measures that uh this administration is going to put in place to be able to track one-time money, so you make sure. Yeah, so you don't uh tie it to any recurring revenue, get yourself in a predicament like what was going to be presented in next year's fiscal, in next fiscal year budget. So that's forthcoming, that uh, my pro tip. All right, uh, page two, uh, members, if you look at uh, one of the things we want to bring your attention to is line thirty-four, column G. Uh, that said FEMA Hurricane Laura reversal, uh, that's over half million dollars. Uh, that is one time money, that's one of the big chunks of money that uh is expected to be in this fiscal year's budget. But it's not going to return. Uh, so that is a significant amount of uh funding that, you know, we're going to have to work together to uh bridge that gap. Hopefully, uh, because one of the things that uh Mayor Moore is focusing on is uh grant opportunities. And um doing uh implementing more uh cost-effective and uh efficient things in towards uh operating the city. Uh, and uh, taking savings that way as well.
Do we have a grant riding on our state?
Uh. Currently, you have, currently, currently, we have a contract for certain things uh with Mr. Waxman's right grant stuff. That was just more headhunting grant writing as a specific uh one-time grant writer, not that I'm aware of.
But we we have uh Mayor Moore and I did meet with uh Nice妹子 from North Delta. Uh, who presented, uh, I think we have information forthcoming in regards to that grant award that we just, did y'all talk about there? Anyway, she uh looked at us and indicated that there were some funds available for more infrastructure projects. Mayor Moore probably, his members probably did better than mine in regards to that meeting. But we also reached out early on to uh Ms. Leslie with Lotte Corp. Uh, there is some American bipartisan infrastructure money that's still out there that, um, you know, we can try to apply for. And then, um, after we finish the budget process, uh, we're going to follow up. I'm not sure if the previous administration completely delivered interest or the, uh, I forget the initial uh application. I forget what they called it, to um, you know, be available to get uh assistance from Lotte Corp. So those things forthcoming in regards, but again, those are uh made going to be for infrastructure improvements. And not going to necessarily assist us with the uh uh one-time money problem. But again, any dollars that the city can bring in to improve the infrastructure, uh, I assure you that, um, we're going to go for it, we're going to find it, and we're going to apply for it. You know, worst thing that they say we can't, you know, it's nothing, so, but that's not going to be a uh a hindrance to pursuing that.
Also, Mr. Bill Bill attended that meeting yesterday, I bought the grants also, and brought me, brought us back information on what they went over. So. Mr. Ricky. Mr. Smith. So to your point, um, that is a pro tip. When I looked at the budget for last year, it was thirty-two thousand dollars allotted for grant rights. Something like that. Go back and look, you remember it was like thirty-two that we didn't use, but Mr. Jones, how much we, can you remember right off the bat?
I think it was twenty-five hundred was used.
We just used twenty-five hundred, so the money was set aside for grant writing.
And that's uh, and I apologize to uh councilmen, it was uh, I was late and I had a uh. The ARPER um report was supposed to be included in the package, it was not, it's on the desk in the office, it's locked. But uh what Councilman Green has referred to uh is the thirty-three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars that were uh. Obligated for grant consulting for the city. And per this report, it appears that only uh twenty-five hundred was actually expended. Uh, so there's opportunities there uh for the administration to uh pursue uh some grant writing assistance.
So, so Mr. Waxman's uh services were coming in under that, under that thirty-three thousand?
Possibly.
It's somewhere else.
Um, possibly, uh, to the extent that, again, we're still trying to uh find information. I don't know if any contracts were signed that uh obligated, further obligations funded, this is one of the things that I believe uh Attorney Jones is is. Uh, to determine that, and that's an opportunity uh for the the city to have uh access to at least some funding to pursue uh consulting in regards to grants.
That is correct, it was, and that is correct, and per the ARPER report, uh, we have a copy on my, we wrote the. Reporting that was done in March twenty-five, uh, thirty-three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars of obligation. Uh, there are total cumulative expenditures are are thirty-five thousand seven hundred fifty. With the current period obligation being thirty-five hundred and twenty-five hundred in expenditures, so it looks like there's some rate to move there.
Sounds like there's a lot of them.
Get you some ground, Ricky, get some professional help in there. And, you know, one one part about it is is that we've we've all kind of hit the ground running in different ways. I would say to give to give the credit of Professor Smith, who has prepared this budget, you know, with the mayor and with finance chair. In a format that is is easily readable, but with numbers that articulate actuals that you can verify in categories that can help you, even the general public understand that. I do not have a finance degree out of brand businesses, but uh it's very easy to read. But we've also had to run in different areas to collect information about grants and other ones, because there is a lot of one-time use money. And we kind of had to leverage the professional uh relationships we've had with people throughout the years, Professor Smith and I. To get some of this information and so. to get some of this information. And so that's why we're starting to get the movement to be able to ascertain where do we come from and where we're going. So that we can come forward in thirty days. I will say that it's pretty remarkable to me for what what had been seen before versus what you see now, which is very, very clear. And I think the public will be able to clearly see where the state, but the city's money is, the whether it's recurring or one-time use money, and where it's going to be expended.
That's that's what I'm happy about. Um all of the hard work so far, and it sounds like everybody's ready to do their job and get our city back on track. So it's very hopeful that we headed in the right direction.
All somebody does is I think Mr. Smith slipped off your account. It's wrong with the mayor.
Yeah. So members, uh that's the most significant thing to note in regards to uh page two, uh in the revenue side. Uh page three, um there's nothing really major to note outside of uh what I indicated in line seventy-eight, column G, uh in regards to the sales tax projection. Again, members, we uh wanted to be conservative in in this budget, uh and we probably underestimated uh certain revenue pockets, uh just to make sure that we don't, and you know, six months down the road, find ourselves something behind. Uh but I'm hoping that some of the projections that we have are um, you know, are are, you know, uh bypassed so that it gives you, you know, the council flexibility to uh have these uh funds to pick up other projects or he ain't just revert them back to the fund base and go refund them.
And in turn, it's something that I was concerned about, was all these different cell phone deals. And I would like us to get a list of everybody who has city or bachelor cell phones. Do they really need it? And us maybe trying to restructure that and get everybody under one plan. And I know that would decrease these deals.
And and we'll uh, and I I don't have it um itemized uh in these court documents, but I I have identified certain expenditure items um that I'm gonna, you know, compose and compile and present to you. And that's one of those uh items uh that I, that just kind of, it kind of jumps out on.
Yeah.
Uh so and then when you consolidate it and you, you know, put it together and it really pops. And then you ask your questions, okay, how can we be more efficient? Uh and what can we do to minimize that cost? Because again, that's a recurrent cost. And if you can cut forty percent of it, and then, you know, when you start doing that, you know, five object items, ten object items, twenty object items, now you're talking about significantly.
Because everybody does not need a phone, not on the city.
That's me. How you all, Mayor Moore, come up with, I'm just gonna bring in. And I'll, I'll read it still at that that point to your uh house person. It's it's as simple as something as of today, uh I had a meeting with the IT individual who's performing up services happened to drop in. Uh prior to July one, there was over two hundred emails accounts for the city. Don't know specifically what those costs were for an email account. There are only eighty-six active email accounts as of today that are being paid for, but each one of those has a a subscription fee for each month and migrated to an email system. It it, I don't know if you ever emailed the city before, but I did uh and did not have a city email. I have the email I have no problem giving to email. Bachelor City Attorney Gmail, so I can segregate my emails out. Because you have records retention. And my email would bounce back with this email's not confirmed. You send another email confirming you're a live person. And so that problem as of July, the beginning of this month, has been resolved. We don't want to pay for two hundred emails. We pay for eighty-six for the active members who are here. And every individual uh has access to their account now, since this council person's all due, as the mayor does and as myself and Mr. Smith are getting our own emails rather than using Bachelor City Attorney Gmail dot com.
And I think it's the simple things like that that can help us bounce back and stay afloat.
Well, it's it's simple measures that don't seem, when when you start talking about items, it's about expenses. It's never the death of the biggest, a thousand little companies that you don't realize. It's the it's the five dollar subscription every every month that you can get about. Planet Fitness, that's personal. It's a little different with the city, but it's not different. Uh it's just on a different scale. So you start talking about, we had two hundred people transition at some point, eighty-six of which are only being actively used, but two hundred who had email. That cuts down on on liability, it cuts down, streamlines the process.
And you're gonna see a lot of that as we go and we do a lot of things. And we learn new stuff every day. Inefficiencies and inadequate systems and inadequate processes that um when you start tolling them, uh can get current costs.
Mr. Smith?
Yes?
Uh I'm looking at the number, this number here, and I see it's zero.
Tell me about it.
Yes, I am. I'm just basically asking Dr. Police, uh drug seizure. Uh and you also have that listed on the uh five-year average. And I think that number is zero as well.
What's the line?
What line is page?
Number sixty uh three on page three at the top.
And then actuals is page, not, I didn't want to space. These forfeitures, you look at the fourth page on the court document, page three, uh sixty-one. These are actuals. So um I I can't explain why there hasn't been anything collected over the last five years. So because nothing was collected in the last five years, we didn't, we didn't propose any revenue?
Yeah, I under, I understand that, but my my question is, is is this actually true or is there some type of paperwork or something that we're missing? Uh because again, I'm I'm, and I'm just a, you know, just thinking as an average layperson, city or bachelor police, you're saying we have no seizures for anything in the last five years?
So what that number is gonna articulate from the city attorney's office, that number articulates the individuals who had property that were involved in asset forfeiture. Asset forfeiture goes to the fourth district. The primary object of that generally comes through the sheriff's office, whose cases generally go to the fourth district. Drug asset forfeiture in Morehouse Parish has always been hysterically low. I can tell you how much it was last year, even in the fourth district. It's much lower than what Washtau was. The common forfeiture that occurs in Morehouse Parish is what we call bond forfeiture, where somebody misses court and they forfeit their bonds. We neglect some of that money. Uh the the bonds are forfeited if they do not timely appear after having missed court. It's a hundred and eighty days. If we let them go ahead and start the process to seize the bonds, they're going to appear. Drug asset forfeiture is if an individual's pulled over with drugs, they can seize the vehicle. Those forfeits usually go to the fourth district. The arresting agency is to receive fifty percent of the proceeds. The prosecution receives the other fifty percent if it is successfully forfeited in court. In Morehouse Parish, I can tell you since two thousand eleven, drug asset forfeiture has always been a very nominal figure. Even when you start to talk about the N L D E B, which is the Northeast Louisiana Drug Enforcement Bureau, which is our joint agency force uh between the sheriff's office and the city and any federal people who are assigned to this area to work together and collective task force. Asset forfeiture has always been historically, I can tell you, less than thousands of dollars. It it it's less than ten thousand every year.
Is that normal for a city of this size?
I've never compared cities. Is it normal, is it not, is it, is it proportional in relation to, in relation to, in relation to Washtau Parish? Uh which is a, which is the sister here. Even if you, well, let's take the caseload for instance. If you take the caseload and divide it out, forty percent of the crooked long cases occur in Morehouse Parish. So is it proportional? No. But for the resources that we have that are doing those types of investigations? Yes, because the assets generally have to be of some value. The the value of assets that tend to exist here, uh vehicles, things like that, or your most common, they're lesser of value. Once they're underneath about five thousand dollars of worth, it's, it becomes an equation of it's not worth auctioning going through. The cost exceeds the profitability. So a lot of times, there are no asset forfeitures. And that's in the city and the parish. But that is something that, and speaking with the police department, this today with the mayor, that is something that I have experienced, you know, that can help with training these officers on what to look like for asset forfeiture. Because if you have individuals who 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 are involved in narcotics activity, one thing that is a product of narcotics activity is the proceeds, the nice, the nice things. And that is something that we can work forward with with the police department and training them in how to determine assets and how to look at cases where if an individual's pulled over, they're in possession of drugs with what would appear to be the intent to distribute them, how to go through the steps to begin to seize vehicles and get things like that and train them that manner. That is something that whenever I was an assistant district attorney, that is something that in this parish that I actually did that uh the now district attorney didn't do for this parish, although that was his field. He did it for Washtau. I did it for Morehouse Parish. And I can work with N L D E B members also to work with our city officers to help facilitate some of that, to maybe bring that number up. That's why you see the five-year total that historically it has always been inconsequential, unless you just happen to pull somebody over who had happened to get a drug seizure case or a drug case where an individual had a large amount of cash on them.
One last, one last question, and still can we take the same thing? So right now that Morehouse Parish is helping the uh city police department, right? If there is a uh, there is a drug uh drug bust somewhere in the city, but Morehouse Parish deputies are the ones that are actually making the bust in the city, where, how how is that transition into uh the different departments?
So generally speaking, if you have, I will tell you, generally speaking, if you have Morehouse Parish Sheriff's deputies helping with the Bachelor City Police Officers with regards to that, that's probably why you see your your figure closer to zero. Because that is a joint, that is a joint task force effort, and that money goes back to the N L D E B, which is the joint task force that the city uses and the parish uses, and it funds only N L D E B operations. So it is used by them. There is some forfeiture on that level, but it's used by them to pool resources to get drug investigations. Well, so it it, and some of what it is, is historically, you have to, look, by a bust operation, where do you get your money from? You gotta get it from somewhere. So but I can tell you what, you can give me about ten minutes, I can tell you what what forfeiture looks like.
No, it's like moving assets.
Yeah, well, I can pull up what the numbers were for the parish.
And council mobility, though, you got me curious. So I'll probably go back twenty years, look at the actuals and give you a report. Because these these line items is what I inherited. So it had to been collecting revenue at some point. So I'll get that to you, Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Uh members, uh draw your attention to on page three, uh line ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, look at column uh G. Those are, again, one-time uh dollars. Uh that's roughly around a little less than probably. Uh line uh ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, page three, four.
But all that's going to the airport.
That is. I want to say, and uh Mr. Jones, correct me, there may be reimbursements. It's uh money that's coming into the airport, uh it's one-time money. Page three.
Yes, that, so. Correct. So that was the re, that was the money that came in, went back out for the million dollars worth of airport rehabilitation we received with. And that project has been completed. And in fact, I believe we have a uh, the block grant notice flows out that file. And that is part of what we engaged with today with the Louisiana Community Development Block Grant Office was to find out where the foster procedure is. It's, they will, at the next step of that is to have a site review and submit all the paperwork to ensure that we did the project as we stated in our application, wouldn't we expended the ones where they were. And uh having a professional individual who's helping us with that, it's not, it's just somebody who's providing that is helping to us. No compensation coming.
The thing that we have to determine, is Mr. Jones, we have provided that, so that is really not, no restrictions on that, because it's it's reimbursement.
It's money that's given to us from the uh, from the airport system, federal grant.
Yes, it was a, it was, it was a.
But it's putting our money in our, they have, but it goes right back to the airport.
Correct. So what happened is, is it appears on the paper, because you're looking at a twelve-year, a twelve-month thing. We expended it months before, and then the last month's got the reimbursements.
And on page four, four, again, you still, uh that's more of that one point six million dollars of uh one-time money. We're looking at uh line ninety-four, ninety-five, column G. So uh overall, uh the revenue proposed budget uh is four, fourteen point three million dollars. And if you compare that to, I'm on line ninety-nine, uh to the actual expenditure, uh the actual collections, uh that's in column E, it's pretty static between uh what was received last year and what we proposed receiving this year. Again, uh we did a very conservative uh projection in regards to uh projected revenue uh that uh we proposed in this budget. Members, you have any questions with regards to that? Again, this is just uh a proposal. Uh members, if if you look at certain revenue, again, if you, if you look at sales tax collection, you think, well, thank you, a little too conservative. If we wanted to this, uh you know, we can work together and come up with a, 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 a different estimate. Because if you can see, members, I'm bringing back, I'm sorry, uh just to give you that example, go back to page three, line seventy-eight. If you look at column E, again, we collected six point five million dollars in sales tax collection. Now, if everything remains equal, uh for the economic conditions of this coming fiscal year, same as last fiscal year. It may be, we may get collections close to that actual, which again, has a uh potential of about three hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue. And um so again, members, you can uh digest this and, you know, look at it, compare it with the actuals. And if you want to be, have a less of a uh conservative estimate or projection, we have was closer to what was uh collected this past fiscal year as well within your project. Uh it's just that point you have to figure out how you're gonna spend it and.
Mr. Smith, consider it.
Consider.
Mr. Smith?
Yes?
Uh under, looking at seventy-eight, line seventy-eight in here.
On page uh.
Page three.
Yes.
Uh sales tax uh revenue, six million. Uh is that, uh does any of that include the uh properties that uh are not, that people are not paying uh any sales tax on?
You're talking about landlord taxes or sales taxes is taxes that you pay on goods purchased? Uh if you look at the property tax by lines, they're seventy-one through seventy-five, with the main one being uh line seventy-three.
Property tax.
Yes.
Property tax.
And again, uh, you know, you can compare each one of these line items. You have a five-year actual as a support document. So you can kind of, when you look at it, you see, okay, this is what the administration proposed, and you look at the five-year actuals, and you can kind of see the rhyme and reason or methodology we employ in regards to making. and you can kind of see the rhyme and reason or methodology we're employing in order to make those projections.
Again, uh, my apologies, but I'm looking at, I was speaking about the property tax. And what I'm wondering is, uh, for the properties that, uh, all of the properties in, in City of Bastard, uh, accounted for? Or how are the ones that, uh, that we have not collected any sales tax on for a period of time? How are they accounted for?
Uh, you can see that in, uh, assuming redemptions, how much, uh, I guess, uh, because when you are delinquing your taxes, you get the taxing and redeeming, uh, that's probably where that number goes.
That's just for the ones that come back and redeeming it, all right? For the ones that are still outstanding.
They're just outstanding. And then that's when it goes toward, uh, Mr. Jones, you can explain the due diligence process.
Yes. And so, once a prop-, once an individual has failed to tender the taxes that's due, it becomes adjudicated. At that point, you have, with, after the first year, it becomes adjudicated for those taxes to, which gives the city the right to come in and take title to it. Historically, municipalities, the city, the police district don't take title to them because it then makes you liable for the entirety of the property. So what happens is, is you have an outside agency or you yourself can sell your right to that by selling the property and then deeding it over without it ever coming into your name. And that specifically is the sale of adjudicated properties online. Okay, there, the belief is, is that they're, they're actually our properties, you're not, we just have a right to do it. We have not exercised that right.
And there's no properties that we've exercised that right on?
None.
We have civil stores, civil stores is the one that doesn't, what the city. I think we have a passive key or a simple service.
But what they do is, is they, any property we have the right to take over, they advertise and then to get bids for the property based on interest. And there is some, there, based on, there's a lot of companies that do it. That's the one that currently does it for us. A lot of people can shop around and, and find who's going to advertise the most, who's going to do it in a successful way, who's going to do it. That's one project that I'm working on, what properties have been sold, how they've been sold, the price they've been sold for in aggregate amount to see that we're actually obtaining what we could obtain so that we can then go to other companies. Because there are thousands. You can choose an gas station down the road, uh, but you go to the one that has the products, the one that sells it at the price you like. So, and so, and that probably appears the way you want it to look when you pull up. The same thing with these companies, a dozen. So we can review the process, what company we use so that we make sure that our properties are being advertised. Because if they're adjudicated, it's not helping us anymore. It's just simply leaving a bad property that can be sold. So it needs to be aggressively advertised, aggressively allowed to bid in a process that's transparent.
And I, I think you're totally right. I think we need to get several companies to come and make a presentation.
Right.
And the one that has the most guts and glory, that's what we do.
And, and part of, a part of making that present, part of evaluating it is knowing where we came from and what we have. If, what are you holding and what, what can you potentially give? Uh, because if you're going to have somebody come in and tell you that they can do something different, look, it's like ad agencies. So I'll tell you they can do it better and faster, but we want to know where we're at and where can you take us to.
Because we don't ever do a report, we do nothing.
So we want, we want measurable results and we want, uh, from the city attorney side, when we're looking at bringing, uh, contracts to the mayor, to the council, or bids for things, we want ways to have measurable results and measurable expectations. People need expectations that they know can be measured.
Point of information, sorry, Jones. I'm like, we, we still under E M P solution, right?
I disagree.
Okay.
Why does civil source?
I, I'm not aware of a civil source.
Civic source.
Civic source. We usually, we've been using E M P solution for two K private.
You're correct.
Can we, can we get a video?
We, we, we haven't gotten a, we haven't gotten a printout since I've been on council.
We have something on our financial statements, the civic source, thank you. We do.
Now civic source may also be the company that sends out, sends out the notices of taxes.
That's to do best with the taxes. Yes.
What is it?
To live property.
When you speak about the notice. Civic source does the, does the legwork of sending out the notices that these taxes are due, that you have to pay it, which then makes it right for E M P properties to be able to, uh, perform that sale function. What we're looking at is the sale function. Is it being advertised? What's the aggregate price they're getting? What's the process for it?
And if it's being advertised.
Way to get to the very end of that.
Is there a way we can bring it back in the house?
Yeah.
It's an option to look at, to bring it back in the house, to see how it is and see what, what it would look like based on. It's, there's going to be multiple factors there. But yes, that is an option I would look at. Can you bring something in-house? Can you do that based on what it is? And it's going to be really looking at, how are they being advertised? And can we do it better, more efficiently and effectively?
And point of information to the chair, the mayor. Mayor, we need a printout as to what's been going on. We, we don't know what's been sold and what's the profit margin, what, what the city has. Uh, Mr. Smith, do you have anything in your records? I have not, but, uh, Councilman Green, I'm putting it on this with Mr. Douglas's course. So if you don't have it, if you don't have it in here, so that should be more revenues. Potentially, because I, I'm not sure, unless, uh, it's in one of these categories that's not apparent, um, that's being. Then I might have to find it. That's what I'm going to find. And again, I, I haven't done a, uh, I don't want to say harder, but I haven't gone deep down into each expenditure category. Because again, moving forward, we're going to see the, the, the presentation a lot different. Because again, uh, going back to these grant monies, those things should be segregated within the side general fund. So it's easier to identify and it's easily to, you know, keep track of it. And then you come, you know, you have the companion capital hourly budgets compared to. So you don't ever have these situations where you get a grant or you get federal funding, there's like, okay, where, when I do it.
You're totally right. There's no way that anyone should have to look where the money was placed. Should be a system.
Right. And, and it'll be a, uh, uh, it'll be organized to where you see, just like, uh, this time next year, you have that as, uh, I don't know what I'm labeling it, but it'd be after general fund, it'd be another bullet point, and it'd have all the grant monies. Then you have the line item, uh, where all the federal ones. Mr. Smith, here's a pretty non-actual question about the U K property. Because if they're selling property and the city's not receiving, it's like they're taking our property, property, they're making all the property. And if you don't have it in this budget, it, it, it's like it's nonexistent. And let me clarify, I don't, I'm not saying it's not, it's just not really apparent, the way they have the, uh, accounting codes and the line items articulated in the system. It's just, we're going to try to, and it's going to take some.
But you can't locate it.
Not, not just a cursory review of, I have to look at each one of each one and see. But moving forward, it's going to be more, uh, I, I'm, I'm apologizing seeing that, uh, members, because it's going to probably be more pages. Uh, but you'll be able to flip to what you want to look at and you'll be able to, uh, you know, review it at a high level and go after. So, uh, that is the, for the, uh, revenue proposed budget. I just wanted to bring, uh, one thing to your attention before we go into the general fund expansion. Uh, other categories, if you look at the original budget, uh, they projected about fifteen point one million dollars of revenue. But if you see, that was a column D, but if you can see the actuals, uh, year, that year depending, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, there was only four point three million dollars collected. So that was a, uh, negative four point nine, uh, million dollar, uh, of revenue that wasn't, that was proposed but wasn't collected. And not, yes. So that's the thing where we want to avoid is to be conservative in estimates. So you don't ever want to overestimate revenues because if you tie it to an expenditure and you get to the third quarter and you're looking like, okay, what are we going to do? You have to def suspend. Um, so that's, when people look at this budget, that's, that's one of the things they're going to jump out and look at. And I'm going to tell you, just go to the actuals. And it'll show you that the trend, quite honestly, probably shouldn't have never been fifteen point anything. Uh, and that's, you know, again, uh, I'm not here to bash anybody, I'll just, these, this is the numbers, you know, and they are what they are. So if you got any more questions in regards to propose, uh, general fund, uh, revenue in the summary that we were about. So real quick, members, uh, the expenditure side and total revenue, again, proposed four point three million dollars in estimated revenue. And we also proposed, uh, are submitted a proposal for fourteen point three million dollars in expenditures. Uh, one of the things that the mayor had instructed early August, he wanted balanced budget. Uh, he wanted to make public safety, uh, police a prior priority. Uh, when you look at this budget, uh, the, the directives that the mayor, uh, submitted, uh, we achieved. Um, again, there was some opportunities for cost savings in regards to Mayor Pro Tim, which we talked about with, uh, you know, telephone expenditures, uh, and also, uh, Mayor, uh, Pro Tim, there's, uh, a thing that we talked about a few weeks ago that one of the mayors, uh, concerns and initiative that he has, uh, looking into is the, uh, when you look at, because we got it broken down by, uh, each department, the, uh, group insurance. Uh, if you look at it, uh, it has, uh, exponentially got to be more expensive. And you look at the actuals and you see the trend line, one of the things that Mayor and I have talked about is possibly, uh, again, this is just one of those aspirational things, looking at, you know, partnering with other local municipalities and, and try to pull together a, uh, insurance pool and maybe enter in some cooperative endeavors. I know Mayor Pro Tim, you and I talked about that a couple of weeks ago, and that was one of your concerns. Uh, and I just wanted to pass it on to the rest of the board. That was something that, uh, the mayor has, uh, put on his part is to try to address. But the issue is, is, is trying to work with other local municipalities, hopefully get a pool together large enough to where we can negotiate for insurance. Uh, because again, I think the city employment with, uh, full-time, part-time, somewhere, uh, under a hundred and fifty, uh, that's a, you know, a large amount, but it's not significant. When you're talking about trying to take your business. So if we can partner with local municipalities and get a pool to, you know, three thousand people, uh, at that point, I'm not saying that we can get, you know, that many municipalities on board, but even if we can come to the table by a, a seven hundred, uh, that'll improve, you know, the position in that collective group to negotiate, uh, for better insurance.
And in turn, as I think, um, when, when the city changed policies, we went from a large company to insurance with an independent, uh, agent. So of course, um, premiums are almost double because we are with a small independent agent. So it's definitely, we don't need to be concerned about that because if employees can't afford the insurance, that is a huge issue.
And if you look at, members, like, just to give you an example, that look at the administrative budget, uh, administrative department, you look at line, uh, eighteen, you look at column D, the original budget for that was eighty-two thousand dollars. But you look at the, uh, year ending total that was expended, uh, was, uh, fifty-two percent increase, which ended up being a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And as you go through this budget, you'll see that duplicated within each one of the part line. And although we looked at the average, um, uh, expenditure in category, you can see that we did propose a sniffed increase, uh, over budget, over the previous budget because of, uh, this current enrollment we inherited. So it's not a lot of changes that we can make at this point in time. But I assure you, that's one of the priorities that the mayor has and he's tasked me to do. Uh, and I hope I can work with you, Mayor Pro Tim, and, uh, making it happen to try to build as large a pool as possible, uh, and do that.
And that's what I said, whatever we do, we should have a heart for the people. Don't make rash decisions. And the people are paying the price.
And, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir.
Where you got?
No, I'm just going to point out one other thing that happened inside. Again, members, this is indicative to most of, uh, the departments and the areas of, not necessarily concern, but areas where we can, uh, potentially see some savings if we, uh, employ different means of, uh, of a process, you know, different practice. Uh, and one other thing to, to pay attention to, which I have to, this is one of the things I have to do a deeper dive in. Because line nineteen, look at column D E, D E and G, other insurance, I'm not necessarily sure what that is, but that has a sniffed increase. Uh, and I can't really tell you what that is at this point. But that's one of the top of the list to have that supplemental to show you along with the call, this is what this is. And, uh, there may be some opportunities to see some efficiencies and do something different, not necessarily different.
One more question. The street light is page, um, let's see, one of fifteen?
One, uh, fifteen.
Yeah, page one of fifteen in the proposed budget. The street and traffic lights, I see that we are budgeting.
What line?
It is number thirty-one.
Thirty-one, okay.
I see we're budgeting two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Um, I think our calculations, we have what, two street lights? How many street lights are we responsible for? Red lights, red lights, I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, that's something I'm su-, uh, I'm not sure, um.
What?
We, we, we're not. What, what? No, that, we, we turned it over to the, uh, to the state.
No, that, that now?
Yes, yes.
We did?
I'll tell you, I was.
So how are y'all responsible for them?
None.
So that's two hundred forty-two thousand dollars.
It was proposed. Attorney Jones, you remember when, when all the street lights was going on, we made proposals to swap. And the mayor said that we, we had turned, it was, we was turning over the older red light that we had to state. I don't know, I don't know the process, which it was, it was completed, but she brought it forward and we talked about it.
Correct. That was during the conversation about, when there was a, there was a street light that was replaced with the stop sign. Uh, and the cost related to it, that, that, there's very few street lights that are actually operated. Uh, traffic control devices, street traffic control devices, lights that are operated by the City of Bastard because of the legacy cost of them. They had been turned, most of them had been turned back over to the state. The state had undeclared certain things and turned the lights over to us, and that's how we ended up with the few that we have. It is because the, the substantial cost to replace those things was a liability to the city.
Well, this may be some extra revenue.
Yeah, again, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, that was one of the things I wanted this to do a deep dive in. Because we basically projected five-year actuals, uh, and I didn't want to make an adjustment up or down because we weren't quite sure exactly those expenditures, what they were. And that's something we can look at and see if there's some cost savings that we can possibly afford. Um.
There's a couple of other things in here that you have to find.
Yeah, and we're going to go line by line, by line, by line. Attorney Jones, Attorney Jones, I've got, I've got to go back and look at the tape because I want to be, I'm not sure if, if that was the state and we was going to get it. Because I remember saying, we, we can't take care of the one we have, so it wouldn't have gone to get another red light? So I, it may be just the opposite.
Yeah, so here's, here's what happened. The, we inherited that, we, we have inherited red lights from the state whenever they've come back in and said, hey, look, we're on, we're relinquishing control of this intersection or this piece of property, which is basically like when we undedicate and get back to underlying owner. We were the underlying owner of the road that they took over. They said, hey, we're going to give this back to you. And at that point, that's how we inherited the lights that we have. And at that point, that's how we inherited the lights that we have, until they were sprayed.
Yeah, okay, so that's, we, we ended up, we could not afford the red light that we had. And I remember, and we gonna take on another red light.
Yes.
We couldn't, we, we, we could come up with funds for one red light, but then we gonna go and take on another red light. And I'm, uh, it's coming back to me now, that's what happened.
Attorney Jones? That is correct, we, we were, the red lights that were in possession of, the red lights from the state undedicated, give us back to us.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
If you will, uh, let's go back to the, uh, uh, line number, uh, nineteen on page one of fifteen.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the other insurance, are we saying, uh, that we have no idea, uh, what that is? Because again, you're looking at eight sixty now, and you proposed.
Right, I, I'm not saying I don't know, you know, that's part of property insurances and different things. What I don't know is the wide twenty percent increase over budget, uh, which I'm not sure if there was a budget amendment done, uh, to make y'all aware of that, uh, expenditure, because it's, it exceeded the, uh, budget allocation by twenty, twenty-one percent. So, uh, again, I know some of that is property insurance, uh, again, it could be the rates, the premiums gone up. It's just one of those things that jumps off the, the page when you're looking at. You, you viewing line, a line item, anything over, you know, ten percent kind of on looking, that's twenty-one percent, so.
I didn't even go to the end, I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at title right now. And you see insurance, of course, you expect to see a, see a bigger number, but since it has other insurance, and I'm not aware of what, what's all in that category as far, then I need to ask the question, what goes into that?
And another thing that, uh, again, moving forward, we're gonna do differently, uh, because again, like, like, you go to line six salaries. That should be divided into probably at least four categories. It should be regular employee, uh, and it should have account number salaries. You should have overtime as a category, you should have per diem as a category. Uh, and that's where you kind of, again, members, this, these pages are going to increase, but you go, when you look at it, you're gonna be, okay, that's what this is, that's what this is, okay? Budget might be, you know, forty-five pages, but it's gonna be forty-five pages that you can read and understand. Uh, and again, that category of insurance probably should have more subcategories to it. Uh, what I did provide, and I'm gonna provide, provide you all by the next meeting is the, uh, what I referenced is the, uh, account, uh, codes, chart codes that, that the, uh, Louisiana Legislature of Hardwood puts out, and this guy is the kind of guy, it's a real good resource. And that's where I'm kind of gonna tailor what we are doing, uh, and improving, uh, because it's, it's, it's gonna be beneficial, especially you as, uh, you know, uh, appropriators and, uh, and doing your function. Uh, and it's more so for, for you all to, um, see what you're gonna do, because again, that, that's something that mayors, uh, has, uh, you know, put forth and, you know, directs that it give, is, is to give as much information to the council as possible, uh, so that you all can make a decision, because again, this is a proposal. This is not something that the administration is saying you, you have to pass and you're gonna pass sales. This is like, this is, uh, the mayor's priorities. And, um, and there's a justification for everything that's on each one of these line items, and we can defend it, uh, uh, each one of them.
Attorney Smith, I have a question. On page three of fifteen, line item ninety, underneath, uh, main street expenses. I see that telephone is just five thousand dollars. So, what, what phone?
That information is, that's, that's forthcoming, uh, Mayor Pro Tim. Again, there's a lot of information that, uh, that quite frankly, that the, the mayor walks to have for himself, uh, in certain things. And, uh, again, uh, the information that he requests is gonna be provided to you all. And these are one of the things that we sat down and talked about, and he wants answers to, and he's gonna get answers to, and he's gonna disseminate to you, that to you all. But it's forthcoming, twenty-four days in, but I think, uh, we're getting a handle on it. And, um, we're gonna equip you with, uh, the information that you need, uh, so you can do your job. Because again, this budget represents the mayor's priorities. And, um, again, this is our proposal. And any changes or any questions or any additions or subtraction that you all want to put forth, again, you know, put forth. Um, you know, you amend this budget if you see fit, um, you know, um, so, and we work with you in regards to any things that you wanna change, additions, attractions, modifications, etc.
I have a quick question, sir. I understand that things are, may not, may not be so great right now, with every, uh, living at the budget and with everything that has to go on. Uh, there, uh, there have been people that have been asking about, uh, is, is the city hiring? And my question is, what state are we in as far as hiring when it comes to, uh, regular employees, temporary employees, or does it just depend on something that, that, something that may come out later on? What, where are we at as far as?
That, that's, that's probably a, a better answer for the, the mayor at this point. Uh, he's directed, uh, again, I know there's something, I think it was talking about key and vital positions. Uh, I can tell you that the key and vital positions that the mayor has identified as a priority is funded in this budget. Uh, I can tell you the reason why we were able to get to a balanced budget is because we eliminated, uh, overestimates and salaries and related benefits. Because, again, if you look at the proposed budget, and they predicted, uh, fifteen point one million dollars in revenue. Uh, I don't have that budget, I don't know what the corresponding, uh, expenditures were. But in the budget proposal they put for F R twenty-six had a eight hundred and forty-some, uh, odd number for, uh, as a deficit. And probably ninety percent of that was in, uh, their personnel. A lot of that was, again, overestimates and salaries of positions that if you were, were, if you had filled them, you would have had to deficit scheme. And the mayor did not want to do that. Uh, he identified key, uh, positions that he wanted filled. Uh, we looked at the, uh, legislative audit report in regards to some of the findings. Uh, there were certain, certain positions that the mayor wanted, uh, that we put in the budget to try to alleviate that, those things, uh, to the extent that we can. Uh, but, um, that's something, uh, the mayor may put out later in regards to that, because I know he's continuing that. Uh, but we funded, uh, and man, I almost speak out of turn, but I know we funded, uh, the position for the clerk and some other positions. But that's something that the mayor, once he finishes through divisions, and, uh, he'll be able to communicate that. But everything that, every position that the mayor intends to hire, uh, is in his budget.
It's in?
It's in his budget. And again, you look at the budget's static in regards to what you actually received in revenue the last fiscal year, let's be in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, and that's the, you know, same amount of revenue that we projected. Again, being very conservative with that. So, uh, those vacancies are tied to that number. So, I can assure you that, um, if the spending, uh, the funding that we from last year uh, matches the expenditures for this coming year, I, I don't think that is in no way top head.
Uh, I'm glad you said that. Point of information. Because when you speak about the imbalanced budget that we received prior to the last administration meeting, um, Mr. Jones, I mean, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
When you talk about over budgeting, and I looked at, when I look back at the last proposed budget at our last meeting on the thirtieth, June thirtieth, whichever meeting we were, I look, and they say it was going, we, we going to be in a hole, if we was, if it was such a, oh, it was gonna be such a burden, we applied a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars last year to the marshal's office. And we had to twist arms just to get that money to the marshal's office. But if it's such a burden, why would it be added to this year's budget? When the mayor was going out of office? They just talked about this topic, but you included it in the budget for this year. And not only that, you added that we paid three full-time employees down there, but you wanna talk about top head. So, let the facts speak for themselves. If there was a problem last year and you did not want it to be, you did not want to fund the marshal's office last year because you said we was already compliant. But you added to, and, and mind you, the council had nothing to do with the previous budget. Not the incoming administration had to do with the pre- previous budget that was submitted to the council on the third. It was already in, uh, by the previous administration. And, and that, and, and, let me get my facts together. And all of that was put in the budget. But then I hear that we caused the, we, we caused some massive deficit, this council, because of actions taken by us. But we had nothing to do with the budget that was prepared. And if people were so concerned about the city of Bastrop, why would you even put this in the budget if it was such a, if it was such, it was gonna be such detriment to the budget? I'm just brainstorming. Now, somebody explain that to me, we didn't have anything to do with it. The mayor and her team prepared the budget. But we get ostracized for your budget that we have nothing to do with. And I'm confused, and I want everybody to follow on with me. We talked about the over money, and we also talked about the four dollar hour increase. The city council voted to give everybody a two dollar hour increase, but that's not it. Don't take my word for it. Go back and look at the special meeting, I'm gonna give you a time to write it down. Go back and look at the special meeting, December the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. You can fast forward all the way up to the one minute, I mean, one hour and fifty-six minute mark. Fast forward to one hour and fifty-nine minute mark. And listen for yourself. And you could, you would be able to understand that that was not our intent. This council made a proposal to increase the police officer salary. Because we talked to the chief, and he said that was, it was vital that we staff our police department. And I'm not gonna say anything else, you just go back and listen to, to me. You don't have to listen to all, just, just go back to those points that I said, then fast all the way forward to the two hour and nineteen minute mark. And that'll tell you everything you need to know. I don't have to justify anything we've done, because I can lie, humans lie, but the video don't lie. Go back and research it for yourself.
Counselor Green, another, another thing I'm gonna say about this, that, um, and we just gonna move forward. People can go back and look at the national labor audit report for the last four fiscal years. Look at what was originally budgeted and what was actually collected, and look at the vast variances, uh, within those things. And move forward, the mayor, one of the things that, because that's one part of the, uh, campaign process that we looked at when we looked at the fiscal health of the city. We looked at the audit items. And one of the things that the mayor said is like, the not amending the budget as we go, we not going to do that. So, uh, he instructed me to come up with a plan, and the plan is this, uh, members, is that we're gonna have a quarterly review of the budget. You're gonna see something similar to this, you're gonna see the adopted budget amount. And at the end of each quarter, you're gonna see the year-to-date. Uh, I can tell you first, uh, adjustment that we're gonna make is probably gonna be in the October meeting. You're gonna see the actuals from year-to-date ending September thirtieth, or thirteenth, I mean, I forget, I mean, the date is September. And you'll see that year-to-date amount, and we're gonna compare it to the budget. Uh, anything that technically is not within a twenty-five percent, either expended or, uh, revenue side, we're gonna make an adjustment. And again, certain things like, uh, property taxes are not collected monthly, but we, we're gonna be able to kind of extrapolate out there and determine whether or not that's within, uh, the certain variance. We're gonna look at, you know, year-to-date from, you know, October, uh, go twelve months back from October and see those collections. So, we're gonna do that after each quarter, uh, and then make a mid-year budget adjustment. In mid-year, uh, the, is the mayor's, uh, desire to start our budget process, uh, the meeting in March. Uh, the mayor would, uh, at that meeting probably put out his, uh, priorities, and we'll do our revenue estimates. Because the plan, members, and we'll get into this, uh, as we go through, uh, fiscal year. Um, the mayor wants to implement a zero budgeting process to where, uh, we figure out what the survey estimates and revenues are. And then we not necessarily ignore what we proposed or passed in the last fiscal year and start a contraction. So, and the mayor, again, his priorities is, is public safety. And, uh, our budget is gonna fund policing fire first. And then whatever's left, we do to the rest of the city, and just go line by line. And each department is gonna come before you all, and we're gonna defend our proposal. Uh, and, you know, again, those are our proposals. Y'all are the ultimate arbiter of what ultimately happens in regards to passing the budget. But we're gonna present information to you well in advance, because the mayor does not want to wait until the deadline to submit, to have a budget adopted. So, and, you know, just kind of getting ahead of myself a little bit, but we are going to institute, uh, a budget process that we're gonna employ each year. And it's probably gonna start the March meeting every fiscal year.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Uh, can you give me some idea as to what is the benefit, the middle ground or the detriment to amending, uh, uh, the, amending the budget or a budget?
The detriment?
During, during, you know, several times during the year.
The detriment is if you have a budget, uh, at the end of the year that's five percent out of variance. So, the, the, the reason why we're gonna do a quarterly?
Five percent or higher or higher?
It's a five percent variance, so that's when you get out of, Mr., Mr. Johnson can kind of elaborate on that in regards to legal application of that. But you can amend, and you're supposed to amend the budget as it goes, because these are estimates. So, that's why the mayor wanted to have this quarterly review, uh, give you a year-to-date at the end of each quarter. I wanna do it as soon as popped, you know, as soon as we can, but it's probably gonna be maybe, um, uh, two meetings after the end of this, the end of the quarter. Just to allow, uh, to consolidate, erects out the, the, the bank accounts and, uh, get those, get the data in. So, we can have a true, uh, comparison of the year-to-date, so we can see where we are. Uh, and if we can do that at least three times a year, we won't have that audit right.
And we're gonna be faced with, um, the problem trying to amend, pass and amend the budget for last year.
Right, correct.
That's why I wanted to separate it.
Correct.
Oh, um, Attorney Jones? Point of information. At our last meeting, we spoke about the Auburn Fund, then allocated by the thirty, thirty-first, by the insurance that was paid.
Yes.
I went back, and I looked at the same meeting, December the eighteenth, when Ms. Hart came, two thousand twenty-four. Started at the forty-minute, I mean, forty minutes, fifty seconds mark. Ms. Tappin asked Ms. Hart a specific question. She asked about the deadlines for the Auburn Fund, and she said it had to be obligated before December thirty-first. But the report had to be done to the treasury department by April the thirtieth, twenty-five. But the report had to be done to the Treasury Department by April the thirtieth, twenty-five. And Ms. Ms. Tappin asked the question, if we passed the budget in April the thirtieth, doesn't it have to mirror what we passed? And Ms. Hart asked us, yes. So if we did something before the thirty-first and the previous administration paid the insurance on the thirty-first, but we met on the thirtieth and the eighteenth and a couple more days, and the money was passed in the budget in October. But at this eighteenth meeting, it said thirty-two thousand dollars for each district. And then they upped it to fifty thousand. So what I want, I'm asking you, can, any kind of way we can get that April thirtieth report to the Treasury Department so we can see actually what was spent and versus what was allocated and what was appropriated?
Yeah, I'm staring, I'm staring at the board right now.
Oh, stare at it?
Okay. And again, that's what I apologize. I had a copy for everybody, but I got locked out. You passed it down. It's in that, uh, Council Green, um, it has all of that in there and I, I don't think it was submitted.
So we can go back and look at this versus, I got it, but what I'm getting at, so I'm saying this for a reason. So if we did our budget and Mr. Mr. D Green asked the question, said, the only way, he asked Attorney Jones, said, the only way, stopping his heart when he asked Attorney Jones, only that we can move this money or whatever is through amendments. Because when we pass the budget, that's where the money stays. And you said, yes, only way we can do it is through amendments. So what I'm getting at is we did not meet after the thirtieth. So I answered my own question when I looked through here and if I see the insurance was paid after the thirtieth, no way we can make amendments because we never met again.
You lose me somewhere.
So, okay, let's go back. I go to all the way back to October when we passed the budget.
You passed the budget with the insurance being paid in in October. And then you had the ARPA money in the budget being allocated, that's expended in full. Correct?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, you did.
No, 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 no. You missed my point. I'm saying about, she says she washed out money and she washed the money. Go back into the tape. She said, she said she moved the money and paid the insurance with our portion of it. And she put our portion of it, paid us out of the jump.
Correct.
Okay. That's what I'm getting at. So how did, if we didn't make amendments, if we didn't vote to amend anything, to change anything, how can she change, I'm not sure. How can the administration change what, what I'm, what I'm saying? Ms. Hart said that anything was done could not be changed unless we voted to change. So.
I'm trying to answer your question. Let's get into the same pattern. So let me solidify some things first. Then we can get some points comment out and see where the, the, the question comes from. The October adopted budget had the ARPA funds being expended in full because it said that there was going to be, I think, one point eight million dollars worth expenditures underneath the order. Correct?
I didn't think we found out about the ARPA fund at thirty days before.
No, you, you had the ARPA-
Yeah, me, you and Ms. Angela met with her in the office.
You had the ARPA funds in the October budget though, as being expended in full at one point eight, I think one point eight billion. You have to look at last year's, last year's adopted budget. It has an expenditure line on there, one point eight billion for ARPA funds. Doesn't delineate out where, it just says we're gonna expend one point eight billion ARPA-approved expenditures. You had your insurance being expended at whatever the insurance policy was when you adopted that October budget. So when you meant to finance swamped it, you used the ARPA funds to pay that, that's ARPA-approved activity. At that point, the question is, when the meeting happened on December the thirtieth and we adopted the spending, the spending list, okay? That would act as an amendment to your budget to create those general fund things. The problem is, is there was never another budget table produced showing where everything was broke out. That's the problem that's existed systemically for years is that throughout the, throughout the year, expenditures would need to be approved that were above and beyond what was budgeted. For instance, when you had street projects, okay? And you didn't put enough in there for the funds so that you could do the bids. That would come back, they'd say, oh, we need to get this increased, but then the table would never exist. The new tables would not exist until the end of the year. And so you can make a legislative instrument without the table there, thereby increases that table, but you just don't have a depiction of it in the table.
Green, I asked you that question because at the same meeting, Mr. Howard Locke asked the question. Say, can we pay insurance out of this and then, one of you get, somebody was speaking with him and the mayor, I don't, I don't quote me on what was said, it was just like, it was blown through, but just play, just say if it was there. So it was, it was already there and it was already allocated for, right? Why would you just not pay that for? Why would, why would it be paid out of, uh, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was for our districts? If it was already there, look like you're paying out of that and we should have still had fifty thousand dollars, be fifty-
Yeah, so what you're getting into is how should the table work? That's it. There's just never was a table produced to, to give you a depiction of how it should existed. So when the new budget came out, the person who previously created the budget table, which is what the numbers you're looking at, okay? You can either put that in words or you can put it in a table. The table, the table never got amended. And so the person who created the twenty-four, twenty-five, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget table that you, that you, we looked at on June thirtieth, didn't realize that they hadn't accounted for the district funds.
Well, I, I, I know I asked a specific question to Ms. Hart. So this list that we have approved in April is gonna mirror the same list. She said, yes.
And it was at the forty-minute mark?
She said, yes.
It's gonna mirror the same list where-
That we approved for the ARPA fund.
Correct.
We said in three hours we did that.
Correct, and it should mirror that.
Not with insurance. We didn't, we didn't even talk about insurance.
Only person said somebody should have missed to have a lot.
But you had to, you had the means of, you had the means of funds. So the only way you can fund your districts is you had to create a surplus somewhere that was ARPA-approved. Giving you money to spend in your district is not ARPA-approved.
She said it will.
It's not, but it is only because you means of financing swapped.
She showed you something.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the whole talk was about because Dee Dee actually asked, can we means of financing swap all of it? And she said, you good.
You're correct.
But, but they only, the, the proposal only elected to means financing swap that amount. That's where the, that's why the ARPA funding shows on the report to do it. That's where you get your means financing swap money. So that you can give it to your districts. Otherwise, you wouldn't have been able to take that activity. So actually, what you're spending is just when you agreed not to, when there was no direct expenditure of funds, all the ARPA funds, you means of financing swapped it so that you could free it up into the general fund. When it went into the general fund, the dedication from there was to districts to be able to spend money.
So, Mr. Jones, I guess what, I think I'm picking back over Ms. Ms. Tappin said. So Ms. Ms. Hart came here as a person who's expert in this field. So what you telling us? So great. So you telling us that she told us that we can put that in our districts?
Yes.
And then you turn and you saying that we, that was not allowed?
It is allowed, but it's allowed to be to finance and swap. That was what the whole discussion was that annoying. Because Mr. D Green then asked, well, can't we do it all that way? She said, yes, you can.
Well, you remember, I was the first one to ask about swapping the money around, Councilman Bradford, he's out there, he can attest to this. And they said, no, we don't do it. I can't, I gotta go back to five, I'm gonna tell you. I was the first one to ask about swapping the money around.
Correct, because, and, and to recall that, I actually told you we could mean to finance and swap all of it.
And what, what, what the previous mayor said?
Shot the idea.
Okay.
Because it would have bought us ground room to be able to spend the money however we wanted. We would create the surplus in the general fund. We wouldn't have had such a heavy deadline of trying to decide on December, the last day of December, how to spend it.
I think that was a big issue. Separating that ARPA fund, trying to get it.
Yeah, trying to secure it so we didn't have to get it back, but we didn't have to-
And trying to adjust it with the budget. The budget in that, but two different entities. That, that's, that's, that's the problem that we had trying to spend money, have it allocated.
Yeah.
But they had to put it back in the budget and that's where the whole confusion was from.
Correct.
And that's been the whole issue.
My advice, my advice from the get-go, the, and the, it was an approved way to spend it from the consultant was is that we could mean to finance and swap all of it.
Right.
And it would give us ground room to get projects. That was not the project where the previous administration wanted to do.
The only thing-
Only thing that she said we could do was talk about the bridge because she said it was, so. Yeah, it was, it was, it's not a, it wasn't a project that was allowed because of the fact that it had been previously funded by something else and it didn't meet the requirements for ARPA spending. So we couldn't, we couldn't mean to finance swap using that project.
Okay, well, I'm glad you, you say the obvious. You made, you said shot it down. So if you shoot it down when I make a proposal to do it, but then you turn it right around and do it on the thirty-first?
Correct. The, and, and I'll, I'll spell it out clear. We, we had gone to propose a means of financing swap for the entire money to gain the ground and to have better projects than districts reads and things like that. You and I had discussed that. We discussed it. Just discussed with the consultant that, yes, you could mean to finance swap all of that amount. We had enough reoccurring yearly expenditures to means of financing swap the entire one point six or one point eight million dollars. That was the far end of the spectrum. Is means of financing swap all of it or do we means of financing swap none of it? The administration elected to go somewhere in the middle with means of financing swap some amount of it, which is why you, the insurance payment was means of financing swap.
We, we could, we could change the budget. We could amend the budget, but we couldn't amend that.
After, after that day. So really what happened is, is when the voting, when the list came through, however the funds were secured or whether they were obligated or they're means of financing swap, you really should have had a table that said, hey, here's your district, here's your district, here's your district. We just never got that table. And so the way the ground room on some of the things was, when it wasn't ARPA-approved, it was means of financing swapped based on that list or to, to be able to get that list, that thing. Be able to get you money from your district, get a means of financing swap it with the agreement, which is what I've always said whenever I was asked, could this money have been taken from y'all? No, because the budget amended, I counted the voted list as a budget amendment, uh, to, by wording, to give y'all that money and allocate it to.
I guess reason I'm kind of conflicted because Ms. Hart, she was the expert and she said before we left, she made specifically that this is the way it's gonna be if y'all, we, this is it.
And she said for the ARPA fund, not for the budget that we changed.
You can change the budget, but the only way you could, but then she said it's gonna, that's-
She said that was fine.
It is, it is fine if you means of financing swap it. It's what it was said. I was there the night that they did it. Because Dee Dee then said, hey, why don't we do it all just as we had all done? And she said, the position was, no. They wanted to go a middle ground with only means financing swapping some of it and directly expending a lot of it through contract.
Well, I guess moving forward, because you can't, can't undo what's been done.
Yeah.
Moving forward, we need to be open and transparent, marriage we depending on you to the man you were. And let's work together and move city of Bastrop forward. We don't need to come here fussing over the process and never getting to making Bastrop better. Because we've been bogged down for the last two years in the process and nothing has been getting done. So let's, let's, let's make a commitment to work together, be open and transparent, and if you notice like a few minutes ago. Uh, from me and Attorney Jones, I'm, I misspoke about it in real life. But I'm, when I realized it, I went back and I said, hey, I was wrong. It was the other way around. I think we all need to, what we found out, we didn't make a mistake, go back to it and say, okay, I made a mistake. I misspoke. There's nothing wrong with correcting yourself. So, Mayor, only thing I'm saying, let's work together because there's a lot of work to be done. And let's really make the citizens of Bastrop proud and not be an embarrassment to the community. Let's work together. When people see these meetings, they'll be like, okay, my city is moving forward. My city is striving. Instead of my cities bogged down in the mud and they just send in a quick sand.
And Council Green, uh, uh, this meeting is evident of that. We getting this information to you more than three weeks out. So, uh, message received, uh, moving forward, this is gonna be, uh, more or less of an end. And then I think some of that confusion on the ARPA stuff is, is that we, we, we had, we were running on a treadmill of sixty days.
Right.
And bringing up council members to speak with consulting lingo with accounting and the legal behind it, it was a lot. It was a lot of pressure, but that's how it was. Yeah, but that list has been effectuated to just the nitty-gritty and the crops of how it got there.
Well, man.
All right, uh, just quickly, uh, I had a couple of things. Again, you know, now, now, pro ten, you look at the expenditures and those things that jump out to you, it's tough on. And there's one in particular on page two, line thirty-five, that, uh, really jumped out at me. Uh, especially when you look at the, uh, five-year actuals. This is on the top of my list to figure out why we spent thirty-three thousand dollars on bank fees. Bank fees. Uh, this is an expenditure that has not occurred, uh, within the last five years. I got a good feeling, I think I know what it is, but I'm on a reserve of judgment. But as you can see, we zeroed that out, uh, and we're gonna get to the bottom of that because I have no idea why. Year-to-date, last fiscal year, we spent thirty-three thousand dollars on bank fees, interest fees. So, uh, I just want to point that out. I don't want to belabor that, but we zeroed it out. And the mayor is looking into that and he's gonna put a stop to whatever. Whatever caused that is not on the, moving forward. Uh, and again, members, uh, you can look at the, uh, changes to kind of give you an idea of things to focus on. Uh, again, when you look at what was put in the original budget, I suppose, to what was actually expended in fiscal year comparing D and E. You can look at, if it has a positive and it's over, uh, you know, if it has a positive percentage, that means it exceeded the budget amount and that's something that probably should have been amended throughout the fiscal year. So when you go through, you start counting, I'm gonna tell you, you probably don't do it because, uh, it's a lot. Uh, Meiko dues, that's all administration that you kind of, things that kind of jump out. Uh, Meiko dues are what they are. I've been doing that for years. Nothing out of the ordinary, uh, Main Street. You can see those. Uh, the only thing that kind of jumps out is giving like the insurance and things of that nature. Uh, I think, I think one part that you have in these that, that we attempted to locate it and work it together in, uh, with Mr. Smith is that we pay quarterly payroll tax. We don't pay FICA because we have retirement. So there's not a lot of what we call FICA tax, which is your Medicaid and your social security tax because we don't want a municipal retirement system, which is a, in, in person, is what we call that. But there has been, in speaking with the auditor, there approximately, so when you have to pay, any person has a business related with this, you pay your employees withholdings from their checks. You withhold the money, you tender it to the IRS. You pay that on a quarterly system. Some people pay on monthly if you've had IRS issues before you get placed on monthly. No determination as to whether we're paying monthly or quarterly, but what I do know and am aware of is that we have paid approximately of the last audits, twelve-month period, we paid approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in penalties for late submitted quarterly, uh, withholdings on employees. That just means that timely, we did not give it. So understand there's going to probably be, uh, that it's mirrored down in- So understand there's going to probably be, that gets mirrored down in wages and withholdings paid. So currently, I'm working with the Department of Revenue to obtain the penalty invoices that were sent to us. They will send you a penalty invoice that says you have an invoice for a penalty, because it's a twenty-five percent failure to pay penalty, because it was not timely paid. So that penalty totaled somewheres around a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the last audit period, talking with our auditor. So we're trying to determine the deficiency and control there, so that legally, we're not putting it in a fine. And what that does is, is that you get your last, your last month, December, somebody gets a W-2 from us with their amount of wages on it, and then they go and file their taxes. Well, that's us telling the employee what was paid on their behalf and reporting to the IRS, their wages and what, what taxes were withheld. They file it based on that, and then the IRS says, hey, we don't have that amount of money. So then there's a discrepancy there when it's not timely submitted, which can result in issues happening to employees or anybody who says, hey, my tax refund or my tax liability was decreased on the refund side or increased on the liability side, however you want to view it, because the amount that the city stated that they withheld from me doesn't match the amount the IRS received. So we paid approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in those penalties for not timely making payment. Uh, that, that is an issue that is being, one, we're doing the ability to obtain how much was actually paid and for what periods, was it quarterly or monthly that we have to report? Because eventually, when you do it frequently, the IRS will put you on that you have to no longer send it. Quarterly, you send it monthly. So we're determining at what basis do we pay our withholdings based on our quarterly checks that we withhold from them and we tender to them, IRS? And two, what quarters were we penalized for, what periods were we penalized for, and in what amounts each time? But an aggregate twelve-month total through the last twenty-four, twenty-five audit was totaled approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Attorney Jones, how many years you been, just, just off the top of your head, just like you doing your research? It's been reoccurring. How long do you think we've been paying over a hundred thousand dollars a year?
Uh, so when I spoke with the auditor, it had never been previously brought up by the former auditor. But this auditor told, relayed to me that that had been a reoccurring thing for several years.
So we've been paying over a hundred thousand dollars for seven years?
For, for building related to not timely submitting withholdings from employees' checks. There is that issue, so do understand that's going to come somewheres in the budget, that's going to gain some, some gap somewheres. On the legal side of it, doing the kind of the autopsy to see, when did it occur, what was the deficiency? And how can legally, because that can't put us in a legal bind if we have an employee who files their taxes on January eighteenth or January thirtieth, when the period opens, we haven't submitted that quarterly amount until February. So on the legal side, we're sure enough that, and on the budget side, Mr. Smith will be able to explain how that's going to have some play to the calculation as it goes with all our wages and expenses, along with bank fees, that's what I had to do. And what we do to deep dive is, I'm curious to figure out where they included that within these line items, because we don't have a line item for the linked taxes, as you can see. So it's embedded somewhere, we'll find it. So it's, it's taking a team effort to discover what is the actual amount and where would you kind of work with it?
You got a most of the zone?
I think they most.